Let us pray. Lord God, we just thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Lord, we just thank you for those that are here. Lord, we thank you for every heart and every mind, Lord God. Lord, we ask you to touch every decision that's made here, Lord God. Lord, help us to realize with great power comes great responsibility, Lord God. Help us, Lord, to focus on the tasks that are set before us, Lord God. Lord God, we thank you for this opportunity and change, Lord God. Lord, help us make the decisions that, Lord God, that would benefit the people, Lord God. Touch every heart, Lord God. Lord God, let no envy, and no strife, and no hypocrisy, Lord God, enter into these hearts, Lord God. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attention, fellow. Please. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America, with the highest authority and justice for all.
Ms. Kecup. Ms. Betty Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Lois Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Craig Hill. Mr. Rex McFrodkey. Mayor Johnson.
At this time, we will entertain public comment of any item that appears on the agenda. Right now, we give the public an opportunity to speak on that issue. Yes, Mr. Martin.
Have to be an item on the agenda?
Excuse me?
It has to be an item on the agenda?
One once, one twice. Item number two, approve the minutes of September meeting. It has been properly moved? And second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that's unanimously approved. Ms. Tanya Smith. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
For those who don't know me, my name is Tanya Smith. I was born and raised here in the city of Windsboro. I moved back home three years ago, and since I've been back home, I've been here to help grow our community. I've been volunteering coaching at Franklin Parish High School, and I'm proud to say that we're now back a playoff team.
Please address the council.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm proud to say that we're now back being a playoff team. I also did a little volunteer campaign for our mayor, and I would like to think that's why he got re-elected. No, I'll just aside. The way he's been able to do, what I like most importantly is how he embraces us young people, positive people who want to give back to our community and help grow our city. And that's why I'm here today. I want to pass down this proposal that I held from the community. What I just passed down is basically a proposal from our community. I really put the time in to find out exactly what the community wants to happen, what the community wants to change here in our area. And it was two things. One being the recreation center, give out new something to do, and I agree with that. And being a coach, that definitely will help put our athletic programs on the same level as other cities we compete with. So, I agree with that. But what I'm here for is the second, because the mayor already had the recreation center intact. So, the second item that the community really elaborated on a lot was three things. If you change to page two, the three city ordinance I have listed there. One being that the community wanted to be able to go to a restaurant and to have food and to enjoy alcohol beverage at the same time. We also wanted to be able to buy beer on Sundays. Thirdly, was the window sales. So, if you go ahead and turn to page three and four, I want to explain how these changes will help benefit our community. The 6% law, which is the city ordinance that's entering our community, with that city ordinance being attached, we're unable to franchise Applebee's or Chili's because of that. If we allow that city ordinance to get changed, we will be able to franchise Applebee's or Chili's. Not only will that give us more tax revenue, but that's also going to help us get more jobs. We get one Applebee's, that's 100 jobs. We get Applebee's and a Chili's, that's 200 jobs. I think that benefits the community. Secondly, was the Sunday sales. Football season is American sport. That's the season of the year. Now, what's going on? Football games are playing on Sundays. Our community is going to Cowan Parish or Richmond Parish to buy beer on Sundays. We're losing that tax dollar. We're losing that tax revenue because we are not allowing our community to spend their money here in our city on Sundays. Lastly, was the window sales, and this is for the businesses that's already in the alcohol retail, which is U-PAC and businesses like Smokes Paradise. They're behind it, they're for these changes as well. Lastly, but not least, tax revenue. These three changes will triple our tax dollar, our tax revenue, which will help grow our community. The city of Rabel, this year was the first year that the city of Rabel had these changes made out, and six months alone, their tax dollar tripled this year, this first year that these changes was made. So, what I got now is the petition that we had signed, and that's all the people that agree with making these changes happen in our city, the people that wanted to see this occur, the people that want to help make these changes in the city of Windsboro. And basically, that's all I have. The last page will show you the potential with all the small towns in our area, the city of Windsboro, how it will grow our city with all those small towns around us, traveling here, spending their money here, tax revenue, basically. That's all I have.
Do we have any court sense?
Ms. Smith, what are you asking for the city?
Well, I'm asking the council board to hear the community out on making those changes to those three city ordinance that's listed on page number two.
Ms. Smith, do you, those numbers that you mentioned about Rabel interest me. Do you have copies you could share with the council about the revenue that they accrued in the past six months, you said?
Well, I do have it, but I just don't have it on me now. But I do have it.
Is that something you could gather for us?
Yes, sir.
Somehow disseminate to us?
Yes, sir.
What number was that on petition?
What number?
How many?
I'm not exactly sure of number. I know I need to get 75%.
That you passed out here.
Right. I didn't count it. I just went to every day club and talked to as many people I could. We went out to Walmart also, and we were stopping people. They were shopping and just anywhere, you know, anybody that wanted to hear us out, they wanted to listen, you know. We got signatures everywhere.
I have a question.
Ms. Smith?
A restaurant like Applebee's, how do they determine where they go? You know, where they build? What do they look for?
Well, I don't think they look for anything, you know, specific. I mean, but the laws in general have to, you know, be allowed for them to build. And with that being said, we have city ordinance that won't allow an Applebee's to be built here, which is the 6% law. And that's basically like a mixed drink, if you wanted to go and get a mixed drinks at a restaurant. Their 6% law prohibits that they have it here. So, I mean, Applebee's could be built here because of that.
Does it have anything maybe to do with like its growth, traffic?
Not necessarily.
Where you located?
I think anybody that wants to franchise an Applebee's could build as long as the law allows you to.
Were the same persons allowed to sign numerous names to this project, these petitions?
I'm sorry?
Was the same persons allowed to sign numerous names on petition, this petition? Sign them in?
Some people did sign twice.
By the same person? Several of us were signed by the same person, different names. Same person? The same person?
I got some of the signatures, and some people in the same, like if they were in the same household, they'll sign, like some women sign for their husband or something like that, so.
In order to count as voters, they should be authentic signatures of the votes. Am I not correct?
I think what Ms. Smith is asking the council do is maybe look into it and consider it and talk to your constituents. I don't think she's presenting this as a formal petition to go and have a referendum on. I think it's more or less to let you know there's a lot of people that are concerned about it, and we've had it come up the case several times over the past two or three years. I think Rex did a little research into it a few years back. I'm not sure of the procedure. I know the town voted, and when they made it a wet parish, so it's big, the town had three or four propositions on the ballot, and they voted in all of it except one, and that was the one that you were asking for, is to allow restaurants to serve mixed drinks as well as wine and beer. I believe we passed that a restaurants that sell beer, but they voted down the sale of alcoholic beers of high content. And that was just a vote of people, and that was, okay, I guess 20 years ago. I'm not sure. Might be 25 years ago. 30 years. That's a long time ago. Long, long time ago.
It started out before you could even buy a hard liquor in the city at once, where you would have one. You could only purchase it outside the city limits, and then it was changed where you could purchase it inside the city.
Yeah, so I think it, and it's just my thinking, I'd have to research it, but I think it's going to require a referendum of people inside the city of Windsboro to vote to do that. But it's got to start something. And I'm saying that now, that law may have changed where the council can change. I'm thinking the Sunday sales, I think the council can change that. I think that's by order that y'all can do, but I'm not one of the two. The drive-through windows, I think the council can change that. But I think the change, the sale of alcoholic beers of high content, they put up on the front, because on that one, you've got to have licenses and permits and background checks and everything else like you do on convenience store. So, it can be done, but it's just a little, you know, a few hoops you got to jump through. And I'm thinking that part needs a, would have to be by referendum, but it could have changed. I need to research that, if y'all want me to look into it. And I'll be glad to look into it and check the procedure and get it to y'all what needs to be done, if that's what the council would like to do. And just to consider.
Put you off the record, it all starts here, even for the referendum. We would have to authorize a referendum.
And we can look it up and have it before the next council meeting.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Item number four, Resolution Number 14-Dig 1001 Terminal Light Station.
Can you explain the terminal location?
I believe what this resolution is for. Tell me your mind. I believe this resolution is for a, the upcoming application for the capital outlet program. Comes up at the end of this month, actually, it's November 1st is the deadline. Talking with the mayor and Mr. Skipper, one of the items that is of concern for the city in the next few years is the industrial park wastewater treatment plant. That was constructed around about 40 years ago. The plans I have on are dated, it's 1974, so all of them exactly sit 40 years ago. But it's in need of repair. Since the bottling plant left, y'all have had a lot of reserve capacity in y'all's municipal plant, approximately 700,000 gallons per day in excess capacity at y'all's municipal plant. Y'all's average flow at the industrial parks only about 10,000 gallons a day. So, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to refurbish that existing plant there. Plus, you're paying to do two permits. You've got guys running out there every day to check on it and upkeep it. But also, y'all've got some new things that are developing out there. Y'all've got the Recreation Activity Center, I guess what you call it, the Activity Center coming out there, and the school will be locating out there in the next couple of years. So, y'all will be getting some additional flow and trying to think ahead of time to address that situation. Basically, this application would be to install a, or upgrade the existing lift station that you have there and install a full-size industrial park to the municipal wastewater treatment plant. The total project cost is approximately $930,000, if I'm remembering correctly. I've got a cost estimate in y'all's packet that I handed out. I think it's the last page of that. But of that, the city will be responsible for 25%, so roughly a little under $700,000 would be the city's responsibility. No, sorry, I got that package.
You see my face?
I saw a man in a suit looking at me like I was crazy. No, that's wrong. $700,000 would be the, be the grant eligible, the 25%, a little over $200,000 would be the city's share, approximately $230,000.
And that bomb would come from the public work, I mean, from the utility thing?
Yes, if you know, the water's somewhere from the utility farm.
Is there a cost analysis for repairing what's out there and getting it going?
You would spend, you would spend less money in the short term by refurbishing it. I can't get, I don't have an exact dollar figure for that for you. However, in maintenance, operation of maintenance over the next 10 years, you would make your costs up by doing this.
What, efficiency or something?
Efficiency, because you are, you have to think every drop of water that you treat is, there's a cost associated with that. And by doing it in two separate locations, you get an economy of scale. You're already paying, really, what you're paying for electricity or whatever at your municipal plant won't go up as a result of this additional flow because you have such a large plant already. It's going to be a drop in the bucket, whereas if you have to operate a completely separate plant, you got your monthly electricity bill every month that you've got to pay for that. Your monthly minimum alone would probably save you in the long run. You've also got the cost of maintaining your facilities, replacing those pumps periodically, and Mr. Skipper will probably give you better idea of that than I can. But you've also got your sludge facilities. You've got to maintain and haul off periodically the sludge that's generated from that facility. Also, if you would, if y'all do have a larger industrial customer come into the industrial park, I know we've tried here in the last year or so to do the pre-certification on the industrial park. One of the questions on that is what do you have available for sewer service? The answer right now is y'all've got X number of gallons per day, which is somewhere around 60,000 to 70,000 gallons per day, which for a large industrial customer, that's not a whole lot. But the answer was, we can put in a lift station and hook it to the plant, y'all's municipal plant, and you've got 700,000 gallons per day. It makes it more attractive to an industrial customer that you do have that sewer capacity there. Y'all already have the elevated tank and the water on site as well as the gas, so the sewer is really the only utility service that you're lacking in the industrial park.
What is the cost with the initial submission?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Did I miss the cost of submission? Is there a cost?
For to do the application? No, ma'am. No, you're not obligating yourself to anything at this point. If you don't get funded, then you're not out of anything.
I make my motion.
Properly moved? And second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Let the record reflect that. I put you now, Ms. Smith. Thank you very much, Chief. Item number five, Resolution 14-Dig 1002 Municipal Resolution, Constitutional Amendment Three and Ten.
This was sent to the acting city clerk, who's not here tonight, by LMA. And I hope you got a chance to read it. It's basically regarding our procedures and some changes to the state laws. They're needing a show of support. They've sent it out to all municipalities. We will let them know what our, what your vote is, and it will go before the people, I believe, in November. The first one is to allow municipalities to engage a collector. For example, if we did not do it ourselves, as we do with our property, we could engage a collector. The other one, I think, changes the dates from 36 months to 18 months. Those are the primary things. But this is a request of LMA. I think it's sort of a way to poll each municipality and get your thoughts on it. Did you have a chance to read through it? I know it was sent to you a few days ago.
Really, this would be a matter of support of municipalities going in for the individuals with LMA who are lobbying, you know, for these bills. Am I correct?
That's right. So moved? Properly moved? And second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that.
Quick rundown on the projects. First off is the Eighth Street Bike Trail. I know y'all seen the construction that's going on out there. It has to drug on a little bit longer than we expected it to. Contractors approximately three weeks past schedule right now. They've completed the asphalt portion of the work. What's remaining is the striping. I know it kind of looks silly. We've got two foot, two foot of asphalt, two foot of asphalt. Once we finish the striping, it'll make a little bit more sense. Basically, what we're trying to do is widen the street out to 26 foot wide, and then we'll have four foot bike lanes on each side and eight foot, nine foot travel lanes. So, it'll make more sense with the stripings down there, but it does look kind of funny right now. That'll be done later this week, or they're supposed to come out and do the layout tomorrow and start striping later. The 2015 street improvements, I know y'all have requested some additional information at the last meeting. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be here. I believe Mr. Billy Ford gave y'all some of that information out there last week, the week before last, and also included a copy in y'all's packet. If y'all have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. The last item on this list, with the exception of the capital outlays we've already talked about, is the Adams and Cummins side bulk project. We got comments back on that in August, and we revised the plans and resubmitted in September, so basically, we're waiting to hear back then and again. But that's the status of that project. Do y'all have any questions about any of these items?
Thank you, Chief. Billy, did you have anything on the farmer's market?
I can, I don't think, no, I'll be here to discuss it, but I will. As y'all know, that at the last council member meeting that we had, we did get the report back from the fire marshal's office. They ever approved the plans and specifications. With one change, we had one restroom facility, and I don't know if they've talked to you about it, that was a little bit small, and they recommended a change. They said we had to make a change in that to make it where it would accommodate the handicap facility on one of the restrooms. And then they're going to get that back. They didn't anticipate there being a problem with that, getting that done. So, as soon as they get that finalized, then they're going to have all the bits and specifications set forth, ready for the city council to review. And the changes in the fire marshals, I think, Skipper can tell you that's not uncommon, where you have a little change here and a little change there. But they have gone ahead and addressed that with them, and they said, you make these changes and we'll move forward.
Thank you, Billy. Thank you, Billy. Airport manager. Brother George.
Yes, sir. Well, I have good reports. I want to thank everybody who has been assisting at the airport. Ms. Kay, who's contributed a lot on the meeting. Billy, everyone who's worked, worked hard. Skipper and Chief, Fire Chief, and all, everybody's contributed so much. We have cleaned our airport up. I'm a clean person. I like, I don't like a bunch of rubble. And we've cleaned our airport up quite a bit. It really looks good. I give you a chance, if you will, go out and look at it. I think you'll be proud of it. A man who got caught for Dodge plays, Chrysler plays, flies in. He told me the other day, we have a beautiful airport. Well, that is a very high compliment. We've had a tremendous pigeon problem at the airport for quite a while. It's health issues under those hangars and also due damage to aircraft. And I contacted the federal, wild people and the state. And they directed him how to do that, and I've gotten rid of seventy-two pigeons. So we're, we're doing good there. Our gang system, which is a hundred lowland, the council approved recently, not upgrade, but literally a new system. And they started installing that today. So I am really proud of that. It's gonna serve our pilots well. I feel like we'll have people come in to buy fuel. We're gonna sell at a very competitive price. And it's very pleasing to our pilots out there right now, especially. Our new lighting system, which through grants, we, it's about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth. A little either way. And it is in the stage of completion. We have opened our airport back up. We have daytime and nighttime use. So our project there is almost complete. I figure another couple of weeks, it'll be totally complete. And this is the happy part. I'm a veteran, and I love our country. And I, I know we got people here who love America. I love America. And Dr. Gutierrez, if I'm pronouncing the name correctly, he's our surgeon here at the hospital. He contacted me today and we got together. And he is forming a, like, for me, with Angel Flight, like, people in Monroe that fly patients to Houston or wherever. He is forming a, that same type flight organization for veterans. And it'll be done right here in Winsboro. And so I just, I just think that is great. Now, this will encompass not only, sorry to interrupt, Dr. David, don't say it like that. Using his plane, his service, everything's free. But this will bring in lots of pilots to come and work with him to take veterans to wherever they need to be taken at distance. So he is authorizing, or, excuse me, he is commissioning that within himself to get it started. And I would like, for the council especially, to back him on that. This is gonna be something very, very good for Winsboro. So in, in the future, maybe we, you know, just assist him however we can to do that. And then last week, this may upset me a lot to you, but we are gonna be cutting some trees. We're working on grants for doing that, clearing approaches to the airport in Winsboro. And we've never had an instrument approach, which they say is impossible to get. But I was told from an authority, dealing with FAA, that if we can get our approaches cleaned, then we're getting grants hopefully for that. Then we could get what is called a GPS approach and could actually start shooting instrument approaches into Winsboro, which would be tremendous. Bad weather, you can come in here and land. So these are all things we got going. I'm proud of all of Winsboro. I love Winsboro. And I don't know about each of you who travel, but if you'll go to some of the other municipalities and come back here, you'll see that we have a beautiful city. And it's been made possible by so many of you. So we're, I'm trying to make our airport compatible with the beauty of the city. So when people land, they say, wow. I landed at airports all over this country. And I tell you, when you land at an airport, it's nice, it makes you say wow. We do have to do that. Thank you very much for supporting our effort, and we're gonna keep on marching. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question, please, before you go?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned about the flight with veterans, well, I bring my men, because we've been on vet.
Yes, sir.
So on what conditions, merchant conditions or just what?
This is in the early stages of being developed. And I, I can't answer that. But I don't know of any other flight organizations that strictly are for veterans. But this will be encompassing lots of pilots, dedicating, it'll be a free thing. And that would be for longer distances like Houston or New Orleans or, you know, the specialized places.
Okay, one more question. Would it be advertised or you just have to find out about whenever they get the details?
Yes, sir. And it's in the making. So I, I will get with him and as we, it's his project, but he's included me somewhat in it. And I will be working and, of course, through all the different channels, that information will be given to you. And for being a veteran, we thank you.
Yes, very much.
Thank you, Brother George. We, we just like a breath of fresh air for the city and the airport altogether. And I appreciate all that you're doing. Properly moved? Mr. Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've been busy. You probably haven't seen it, but we've been getting ready for Christmas decorating. You know, get to see what they have to go through, get ready for that. In the next few weeks, you'll start seeing them putting up the Christmas decorations. To let y'all know, they've been busy working on it by tomorrow. Takes a lot of checking these bulbs out, checking all those trains, make sure they work so they can start putting them up. Checking all the wreaths, there's a lot going on in front of that. That crew's been working on that. Had a little renovation project we're working on there next to the mayor's office. It's probably about ninety percent complete. And we're working with the dog team, we've got the turf. Moved in, ready to start the foundation up there, we'll get the fence moved and working on the flooring up there. Existing dog team. Outside that, grass mowing is kind of tapered down, which we're glad to see, because it's been a battle issue to mow the grass. Got our street footwork back up and operating going. We're just moving on with our project.
Thank you, Skipper. What is your pleasure? Been properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. It's unanimously approved. Park Chief, Mr. Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the month of September two thousand fourteen, we had five, five dwellers in town, one out of town for total of twenty-eight for the year. And we had one vehicle in town, one out for total of nine for the year. We had two garage floors in town, one out for total of forty-eight for the year. One rescue in town for total of thirteen for the year. We had one business for total of nine for the year that was in town. We had six helicopter vehicles. We had one fire alarm in town, two out, for total of twenty-six for the year. We had one service call for total of sixteen for the year. And it turns to twelve calls for the month of September inside the city, six out for total of one hundred eighty for the year. And last week, we had, well, actually, before last, last week, and this week comes, this week, we got approximately five hundred kids, maybe a little more, here with that. And a, a far awareness still, it's probably a fire station, they wouldn't want to be them. And it, it really worked good. I'd like to thank everybody that helped us in it. And they really, kids had a good time and learned a lot. I thank y'all.
Thank you, Chief. Been properly moved and second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? I'm sorry, just someone?
Yeah, I have a question about the dismissal. Did we discuss that now? You gonna wait till after?
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Brad.
Say that again?
It's not on the agenda.
Well, I was told it was gonna be put on the agenda. That's required in the, in an open.
It cannot be put on the agenda within twenty-four hours of a meeting.
Okay, are you saying it's gonna be on the next agenda?
Yes.
Well, I think a person has been dismissed and unstaughtable.
Mr. Brad, we're not gonna entertain that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
No problem.
All right. Police Chief, Mr. Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the month of nineteen, ten, nine, fifteen, fourteen, ten, nine, fifteen, fourteen, we had a criminal charge, we had fifty-one, total for the year, four hundred and eighty-six. Traffic charges, they're showing, they're showing in paper, council, there's a hundred and thirty-five actually from the month, from the last council meeting to this meeting, it's actually a hundred and eighty-seven citations that was written. But the cost of the way the court date failed, it didn't count for one fifty-two. But Tammy said they were, Perry and Maddie were gonna get together, try to figure out a way to fix that problem. But actually, there was a hundred and eighty-seven citations written since the last council meeting until today. The total for the year is five hundred and forty-two. Highway accidents is fifteen, parking lots is ten. The total of accidents is twenty-five. And calls for service for the year is six hundred and seventy-nine.
Mr. Report.
I have a comment. I can tell you how to fix the problem. If you will do your report from the first to the thirtieth or thirty-first, whatever the end of the day of the month is, everything we want, so I went to spoke, the fire department has done theirs that way. And, and it just makes me, make me record. And then if y'all can get them to the city clerk, and they can get them to us and our package, and they'll all be bound and ordered. And that would be wonderful. And all you have to do is start reports on the first. It'll, you'll have one short month. Is that how you did with her? Yeah, and one short month. But then after that, it just worked, it's worked really good.
Yeah, I think what's, what's happened, we get our report from, from, from the city court, and they're, they're going court date to court date. So that's how it's kind of getting, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out a way to fix it.
First to the thirty-first, and they can, they can pull their report. And I wish all departments did that.
Did you have anything else, Chief?
No, that's, that's.
I move that we accept the chief's report.
Been properly moved?
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that it's unanimously approved. You main officers, Mr. Report.
Number dog, a doctor for the month, zero, fifty-nine for the year. Claim eight, thirty for the year. Falsed seven, forty-six for the year. Monroe one, six for the year. Died in pen three, six for the year. New twenty-two. Total Hannah forty, five hundred kind of dogs. Total pen nine, eighteen for the year, two fifty-nine. Cat zero, claim one, falsed nine, twenty-seven for the year. But it's Martin, Hannah, Martin, dog, cat food, two pounds. Zero in the pen right now. Total Adams in pen eighteen, Miss Lane three. Two coon and a skunk.
I move that we accept the main officers' monthly report.
We don't turn them down. Was there anything else?
No, sir.
What is your pleasure?
I move that we accept the, the main officers' monthly report.
Been properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that it's unanimously approved. Economic Development.
Okay, Mayor, it's the council on. First, I, I just want to personally say to our chief, I, I appreciate the job that your officers are doing. Somebody, you know, if they make a mistake or do something, they correct you. And, and it wasn't long ago, which though, go, I got stopped for, not stopping, it's always stopped. You know, you always go up and do this moving stuff, you know, slowing down and going on. But I would correct it. Friday, Friday, I came up to the same stop sign. I stopped and, and I looked around to make sure nobody there. And then I went off. And then just right down the road, I saw a police officer sitting on the side of the road. I was grinning, they're like a chest of cats waving at me. And went by him and, and all of a sudden, the lights come on. I said, oh my gosh. I pulled open and found out that I was doing twenty-five and fifteen mile an hour cruise. And I do appreciate, I appreciate you doing a great job. And I get a point for that.
We also appreciate the revenue you have in the city.
Yeah, and it, it does, it does show that they're doing a great job. And I, I just want to bring that out. I believe in, in letting it be known that when somebody is doing a great job. So that, first thing I'd like to say that Mr. Kelly Martin and I was talking about, and it's something I was gonna discuss, that I discussed with Skipper Stenson, about the corn pile that's in the industrial park. We are working with the Delph Community College. It is putrid smell, and we need to get it removed. And it's, they, they have contracted somebody to move it, but they were getting slow in movement. And it's my understanding now, Skipper, that they've got somebody that's gonna move it and distribute it. Is that correct?
That's the last word I have.
That's what we're doing. We're gonna get that done. And, and we've been, we've been working on that issue for, for a while. And, and the reason it hadn't been done and it wasn't done earlier, that if, if I'm not mistaken, if I may say, that it was under a federal lawsuit in that. So, so that's, that's, that's what we are. And we're gonna make sure that that does happen because it does not, it does not reflect well on, on the industrial park. And that's my key interest is in the industrial park. I would also like to say, in our capital outlay projects, that, in, in our sewer system, and, and the reason I'm saying this is because, again, it affects the industrial park, that, that if we can minimize our utility system to be accommodated by, by one or facility, it is in the best interest of the city. In the long run, we're gonna save money with discharge permits, and that's very expensive, with permits coming in and fines for the city and upgrading. And right now, I think we're talking about having ten thousand gallons a day capability. And ten thousand gallons a day is not much. I'm gonna tell you, that is the minimum. And if we get Delph Community College in here and, and the center, Recreation Center, then we fixing to exceed that. We fixing to exceed that capability. And, and what we're gonna end up doing, we're gonna have to expand the, the treatment facility in the industrial park. We're gonna have to upgrade the effluent from that treatment facility going into the discharge. And, and my direct skipper on that. And I'd like to say too, Mayor Meyer and he, myself and the mayor and Skipper, we all met on this when, when it was discussed and when we were talking about the capital outlay and, and looking at two or three different projects. And we felt like this would be the best interest of the city to do that, to get that done. It's just like what we did years ago, several years ago, when we dealt with all the water wells inside the city, and we have one production location coming into our city. And that saved the city a lot. Cost of monitoring, the, with the, and permits going through there, it, it continues for years and years and years. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know it's something that you're gonna be considering. And I appreciate you, you taking that in consideration, making a decision. I'd like to say, and I'm, I'm very proud of what's going on with Brother George and his company, but, but the airport's doing a great job. And, and, and we are getting, with the wonderful, you're. And, uh, and, and, and we are getting, with the wounded warrior, here he is, wounded warriors program, uh, you know, and, and the gentleman that is there, our surgeon, Dr. Perez, uh, he is, uh, uh, he is a veteran, uh, and it's something of a special interest to him. Uh, he, he not only, uh, he also flies for the, uh, the, uh, young kids and stuff that need to go to other places, uh, and have treatment. Uh, he, he provides for that at the present time. He is in that program, and it's located out of Monroe, if I'm not mistaken. We have several pilots in the, in the parish that does that, and we're very proud of that. This is gonna be a, a, a location where Brother George is talking about, that's gonna be based here in Wentzboro. Uh, you know, and it's some, it's something that we could be proud of, that we're helping our, our soldiers, uh, in the present and past. And, and I'm sure that, I feel like it's gonna be not, not only the wounded warriors of the current wars that we're in, but it's gonna be the veterans of the past. I feel like that. I'm not sure of it, but knowing him, I think it's gonna do that. Uh, y'all, I'm, I'm a veteran, and, and I know a lot of times that, there's times that I don't have the capability of being medevaced somewhere, uh, if, if it's an emergency. But, but with this right here locally, you know, we will have that capability, uh, to be, um, medevaced out to wherever we need to go. And, and that's, that, I, I do appreciate him doing that. Uh, the Brother George made the comment that, that the airport is doing good, and it is doing real good. And Brother George, you didn't say, but I think you made the comment that, that FNA and Allen, uh, the Louisiana Department, said that the airport would be compared to O'Hare?
Yeah, he's, the, uh, the lighting, the runway lighting system, it's, it's the most modern there is, compatible with Piquet's at O'Hare, just as a reference.
Right, and I, I mean, that's, that's good enough, uh, that we're doing it. That, that proves that we're moving forward. And, and that shows, that shows progress within the city and the parish, and, and I'm, I'm very proud of that, uh, to, to get that, uh, capability out here. Uh, and, and we are moving forward with that. Uh, I wanted to also bring your attention to bug bomb, again. You know, I'm, I'm talking about bug bomb, talk about bug bomb. Well, bug bomb has been a positive, uh, has, has had a positive impact in the city. Bug bomb is in the process of being sold out to Hunter Specialties. Uh, and I know if any of you are familiar with Hunter Specialties, it's, it is a big, big operation. Uh, and, and we are, uh, and I'm, I'm sorry to say that I missed my, uh, opportunity to go up there when, when they were gonna make, make the announcement, uh, in Maryland. Uh, and I should've been there, but I will be going to visit, uh, the, the corporation headquarters and talk to them to make sure that, that we are here, we are here to, to assist them and to help them in any way that we possibly can. And Rick Smith says that he wants to make sure that that happens as well, that, that they expand here, uh, in, in Wentzboro. And, and because, uh, it has proven to be a, a, a successful venture, uh, and, and we're very proud of that. And I, I know Mr. Kelly, he's, he's familiar with the sporting goods and things of that nature, and it, it, it could turn, turn into something like Simmons, you know, what we got up there. Very well can do that, and, and, uh, have a major, major impact on us. We are working as well with, uh, with, with our rubber recycling, Wentzboro Rubber Tire Recycling. Uh, we, Attorney Singer and myself and the mayor, uh, and Skipper, uh, we're, we're working on that, the process of, we have some interested parties that are interested in buying the location from the present owners, and, and they are, we're doing whatever we can to assist them. That's all we can do. If they have any information between two parties, we cannot get involved, but, but we can give them information through the, through our attorney that, that is necessary to make that happen, and hopefully we'll, we'll have that resolved, uh, shortly, uh, and, and get, get that over with. Uh, we are, we are moving forward. Uh, Delta Community College, uh, is, is in the process of, of making their preliminary plans and designs. Uh, and I, I've talked to Ms. Leanne Kiper today, and, uh, and, and we are, and I've talked to Attorney Singer, uh, and, and he, Attorney Singer is gonna be in touch with, with Ron, uh, to get the land transferred back, donated back into the city, hopefully then, but it, that is a, I wanna let you know, it is a process. It's not an overnight deal. It, this takes a long time, and you have to go through, because you go through the bankruptcy courts and things of that nature to make sure that everybody is satisfied with that. But let you know that, that we are working on that, and Attorney Singer is working on that as well, and, uh, he's doing a great job, and I appreciate him. Uh, we keep him, we keep him busy. I, people don't realize how busy, uh, the city keeps our attorney. But he stays, uh, he's, some of us are in contact with him, uh, not two or three times a week, but probably two or three times a day, and, and we appreciate that. I'd like to say I appreciate you for, for the work you're doing and to go through that. Uh, I'll be glad to answer or entertain any, any questions that you may have, uh, with the economic development. I, I would like to say one thing, and I am very interested in, in what the young lady was talking about with the new franchises coming in. You, you, you can, you can get a franchise, but I'd like to say too, to, to make sure if you're moving forward and, and, you know, seeking this type of information, it's not just one, uh, facet of, of the process to get a franchise. Uh, it, it does include demographics. Demographics is the major contributing factor for franchises. And, and I'd be more than happy to, to assist you in any way that we possibly can and, uh, and get you some help or information that you might need.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Billy. It's been properly moved? And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record reflect unanimously. Community Center, monthly report.
She, uh, is not here this evening. You've got a copy in your folder. She just simply asked me to read it. It appears we have one, uh, one profit function, which is the wedding reception this month, and then we also had, uh, some fire department training in the building, which is portion of my profit function. Two functions, that's it.
Move that we accept that.
Been properly moved? Properly moved?
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that unanimously. Monthly financial report.
Julia is a veteran at a conference, and she sent out this report, she's not really authorized to comment on it. I do wanna give you a couple bits of information, because I've been dealing a little bit with cost of control. Uh, Mr. Field, you asked, you were talking about the, uh, energy with waste water treatment plants? Just for your information, we have, uh, the, uh, electricity deals averaging from five thousand five hundred to six thousand five hundred a month, we have to do it. So, we need savings there, with what you're doing, which is great. There you go. Um, Ms. Cup, when, in the last meeting, we were discussing how long it takes from the time that the tickets are written until we see the profit. So, after this first quarter, ninety days, next month, we should start to see an increase in your fines each month, because this first quarter is really from the, the previous, uh, the previous quarter. And like, uh, Mr. Cobb, I'd like to thank the chief. I begged him and begged him to send people to my street, and you did, and I've been stopped twice, since they came to my street, so they're on the ball. And that's really all I can tell you. Unless you have some specific, specific question that I'll answer.
Yes? Um, I'm looking at expenses on community center, just a quick question. Scrubs? We have some I've seen that's getting squared scrubs from Southern Medical.
Uh, she's now in uniform when she's here, uh, my understanding. She's now in uniform when she's here, and I every forty grand from there, head to monitor, from prison.
All right, and we should be at twenty-five percent, is that right?
I'm sorry.
Twenty, twenty-three point four. Okay, just, uh, touching on some that are pretty close to our five, uh, fire departments, so twenty-nine point five. Uh, looks like, uh, I don't know, some expenses, and salaries, or, or what?
They're up a little bit on the salaries, but they're like, they're not over time expected, uh, with people being out sick and preparing for that, uh, the rain, the dispense. I, I think that's wound up a little bit, and on the expense, if I remember correctly, uh, there was an expense in preparing for about a seventy thousand dollar one that was unexpected.
That?
In preparing for the...
What was that for?
Bishop, uh, average jail.
That was, that's that whole time that we had to do for a period of time.
Dammation.
Feel that it make work that now?
Dammation. Dammation fire. Oh, yes, airbags.
Sorry. Um, all right, if I may continue, just, uh, another one that's over the five percent is, uh, street department expenses, thirty point seven.
Uh, they're looking at that, we made some purchases at, uh, they did it at the July. They were needed, uh, actually some equipment purchases, and it should average out, that should average out. I wanna say, uh, Bush called it, uh, most, it was equipment, but it should average out.
All right, if I may continue, uh, employee benefits, forty-seven point six percent.
That one I question myself, and I'll have to get with Julia on that, because she handles that.
Okay, 'cause that's...
What it looks like to me, and I'm just, I'm just saying what it looks like, is probably there's a utility fund purchasing that was misplaced, that's a guess.
Why is that?
I don't know. I, I'm just saying, that can be a possibility. I really don't know the answer.
All right, can, will you gather that information for us? All right. Waste water treatment plant, thirty-six point eight percent.
Again, same thing as, uh, with the street department, we bought a panel of some sort that was needed, and that's gonna average out as well.
Good. And that info that you will provide for us will be prior to the next meeting, or after that?
Prior to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to point out a couple other things, just in case it comes up later, to explain it. Um, Eric, general fund, uh, general government, when you look at the salaries, administrative, uh, what needs to happen here is very high, it's at seventy-four, and that is for, uh, two reasons. One being the previous part, uh, had your salary for the month of July, and a little bit of August. And Mr. Stenson, from July first until the budget was passed, was paid from there.
Right.
That will be repaid to the utility fund.
Good.
Uh, same thing with the shop in that category, uh, the employee that will be paid from the utility fund was paid from July the first until the budget passed, from this fund.
Okay.
And that will be paid back from the other fund.
I have a question. The general fund, what's the balance in, in, in the general fund? Did you give a balance in the general fund?
Uh, a bank balance?
Mr. President, you were not recognized. Be, be, be concerned.
Straightforward?
Okay. I, I did not recognize you. Uh, you, you feel free to speak, I, I would wait for, for me to recognize you.
Yes, sir. May I be recognized, please?
Excuse me?
May I be recognized, please?
Yes.
Am I recognized?
I said yes.
I was just asking, Mr. Commander.
Well, I said yes.
About the balance for the general fund.
I said yes.
Well, I'm talking, I'm, and give me an answer.
Actually, I, there was calls, Ms. Julia would be the one to answer that for you, and I can have her get that answered.
Is the half percent tax included in the general funds?
No, sir. Then the sales tax, uh, that all goes into the sales tax fund, and is divided into sales tax fund and then sales tax fund street project. So the ha- half cent of that collection goes into sales tax fund street project. The rest goes into the sales tax fund, and then is transferred to the general fund as needed, uh, based on what, what is the budget for it. Are any, are any resolutions in addition to the budget?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have one more thing, and please have a question. On the beautification, uh, budget for the general fund, uh, it's at seventy-five percent. That's not a, uh, money that we spend often, because we have so much on with the garden clubs and things throughout the year. Uh, last year, we didn't spend any at all. This seventy-five percent went to the Patriots Square, um, what they did by putting the papers down and the improvements there. So that is one thing, and it, that will average out.
Richard, have a...
Okay, before we adjourn, I, I just wanted to clarify, uh, one small thing. The legislature's made some changes, uh, a while back, that pertains to, uh, public participation in, in, in a meeting. At the beginning of our meeting, we allow you to, the opportunity to speak on any, any, uh, agenda item. That is, that is active, the, the remaining of the meeting is dedicated, uh, for the councils to, to speak. That is the only time that, unless, that an exception is made, that, uh, that, 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 that the general public, uh, can participate, uh, in, in, in the, uh, agenda portion of program.
I understand.
Okay. If anyone can get on the agenda.
Provided that you do it twenty-four hours before the meeting.
Right, right.
And then like, like Charlie, if you wanna get on next month, you just call Julia and, and, and you can be on the agenda, please.
Thank you, Tom. I'm trying to get recognized again.
Okay.
My, my, my question was, is, we have talked about, what I was talking about earlier, and you had told us, it was my understanding that we were gonna discuss this at this meeting. I'm in error, because like you said, at the beginning of the meeting, I did not get up and say, are we gonna discuss this? But I was told it was gonna be put on.
Let, let, let me clarify somehow.
In past time, in past time, your agenda had been amended.
If there's one hundred percent of the council, uh, will allow you to, that, that the agenda will be changed to allow you to get on the agenda.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Mayor. I thought that the agenda had been amended, but this could be discussed.
It could not be, uh, amended within twenty-four hours. It cannot.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Before y'all close, can I give a thank you, ma'am? Can I give a thank you?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I got two more on the horn now, because I'm six-three years of age, and I hope to be alive about a hundred years. But, uh, I just, I, I'll be graduating this coming Friday from Columbia Southern University. I obtained my associate degree in fire science. And Mayor, former Mayor Billy Cobb, he's been wanting to hire me, and thank you for hiring me. And, and, uh, Mayor, you kept me on, so I appreciate that too, so. I just want y'all to know, don't run each other trying to get down to a graduation. I'll send some pictures back. Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
What do you play? Moves to accept the financials.
Second.
Secondly.
All in favor? We've had four regular meetings and four special call meetings, and Ms. Lois Jerten's nameplates look like this ever since she's been here. So in honor of you, mine's going to look like that until you get one.
Well, I spoke to the mayor when I come in, and I told him if I didn't have one next time, I wasn't staying.
She did.
I'll put mine on the table, so next time...
She did, and she did, and I don't know why.
I started to leave tonight, but I...
But I promise you, they will be there and play for the next meeting. And I apologize that they are not there.
I will say, Mayor, that I personally took it by the printing company that is going to design company over a month ago, and I have to go to Monroe tomorrow, and if you'd like to do, I'll go by there and get an update on it exactly where they're at.
I would appreciate it so very much.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Everybody didn't stop to get a cookie since we didn't take a break, or I'm going to my head. You guys...
I believe we're jerking.
And I'll set it.
Properly moved.
And I'll go get a cookie too.